We have a meeting in progress.
No. I didn't know, I thought. So I would really like. There was some. The motion was. So there's one. Uh, she's been.
Then.
You know, that you do, you know, all that. Oh, I had things to do, okay? Well, bad. Good. Nothing I don't share. Because we.
I'm recently trying to come on stage.
Very much. As we can. And we're going to. Oh, he. So I don't like your. The noise. I'm with. If you. Any system. Sorry. Yeah. I've been rolling my son. They like saying.
How are you?
Actually, I'm good.
All right, I am going to bring this meeting of special meeting of the Dunsmere City Council for May twenty third, two thousand twenty four to order. It is six oh two P M. Uh, if everyone could please stand for the flex.
I actually lead you to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, with every deed and justice for all.
All right, with that, we will move into roll call.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilmember Doish.
Here.
Councilmember Luke Casey.
Here.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
Mayor Clarno.
Here. All right, we don't have any special presentations or announcements tonight, so with that, we will move on to public comment. Um, quite a few people here tonight, so I'll just go over the rule, the basic rules for public comment. If you choose to make a general public comment during this period, everyone will get three minutes. If you choose to directly start off with your name and address, I will start off, or I will start your time after you have said your name and address, and then your three minutes will start then. If you choose to start talking and then include your name and address after a few sentences, that will be part of your time. Uh, you cannot yield your time to another speaker, uh, please state your name and address um ahead of time. If you are here today to speak on an item that is under old business or new business, I do uh request that you wait and hold your public comment till that time, as those individual items will have specific public comment periods, and I assume that a lot of people are here today to speak on a couple of those particular items. Uh, with that, we will do people in the room first, followed by Zoom.
I would suggest that uh you would take this moment.
Hmm.
To acknowledge the fact that the agenda is not right, and we are going to be making some changes.
Yeah.
At a meeting next week, this is when you should make that announcement before people speak, so they know what's going on.
Yep, so with that, um there was some issues with the way the agenda was posted for two particular items. That would be building official, well, should be building official contract, but it says building official contact, and the historic district reformation and or review and committee. Uh, both these items, since they were not properly agendized under the Brown Act, um no decision can be made tonight, but what we will be doing is we will be holding a special meeting next week where we will be um deciding on these two particular items. Since a lot of people have come to speak tonight on those particular items, what we will do is we will, once we get to those items, we will let those individuals who have come for public comment, uh, we'll ask a few council questions. We will go into public comment for those items, and then we will do uh then we will table the item until next week for those two items, just so that way everyone who did show up tonight has a chance to talk.
And Mr. Mayor, since this was an item that I brought together along with Councilmember Kaiser, when it comes time for the item, I might just like to state the very basic on a situation from the standpoint of other council.
Okay. Um. And then going for that, we'll do Zoom for, or we'll do people in person first, anyone who would like to speak for general public, public comment, once again, if you do have something for those particular items, wait until those items, we'll do in person first, followed by Zoom. Uh, I will give everyone a thirty second warning when your time is almost up, and with that, whoever would like to start may come to the podium.
Who's first?
I mean.
Okay.
River, and that point seven point Cincinnati.
The microphone.
Wanted to let the community know that um the farmer's market, the people's agent, uh, two weeks.
Okay, I didn't pause your time while we fix that.
Okay, do I need to? Okay, the Dunsmere Farmers Market will open on June twenty seventh. Uh, it will run Thursdays during the summer, um possibly into October, depends on the harvest and the weather, um, from four to six thirty P M, except for holidays, so July fourth.
If we could keep talking down, while everyone's speaking, it's a little hard to hear in here, so.
Um. It will be in the parking lot of the Dunsmere Community Center Building. Um, it's managed by the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. Uh. There will be an E B T match of twenty uh twenty dollars, so in other words, low income families, seniors, other individuals who are eligible um will receive uh, will uh, the, the money they purchase with their E B T cards will be matched up to twenty dollars, as long as the funds are available, and if anyone would like to donate to that fund, to the match fund, that would be wonderful. Um, I would hope that people can help spread the word to organizations that they belong to, um, to their friends and family, to churches, uh, just help us get the word out, social media. And if people would like to participate as vendors uh, selling produce, vegetables, and fruit uh that they have raised, or food they make, um, crafts they make, they should contact the Resource Center for the information, there is a process, and they have to apply and be approved, but it's very doable, and uh it's a good way for local people to earn a little extra money with uh the extra vegetables that we sometimes have, or fruit that we sometimes have in the summer. Also, we could use some volunteers um to uh to help with the market, so thank you so much, and come on the twenty seventh of June for the opening of the farmer's market, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wanting to make a general public comment this evening? All right, seeing no one.
Wait, no, no, I believe there's a man in the audience.
Hello. Um, Allison River Avenue, I'm, I just want to briefly address that the minutes from the last meeting have my name incorrect, it's I had, has me as you. Um, I know our names sound similar, um, so just doing that correction would be great um on the public comment. I would hope somebody up there caught that too, um, anyways, so um, there's, there's so much wrong that I don't really know where to start, so I'm going to start somewhere positive where I was on my porch watching the cottonwood fall like snow uh right before I got here, and it was just so beautiful, and how beautiful the town we all live in that we could share that together. Um, so that being said, I could, moving forward, I continue to have uh concerns about our forward progress. I had mentioned a lot of the future agenda items that remain on the agenda for like a long time. One of them is the special event ordinance, it's been on there for like, I don't know, eight months or so, this is like such a quick, easy moneymaker. We can charge for people that want to come to town for movies, or documentaries, or films, a thousand, two thousand dollars, that's quick and easy ordinance that we can pass. The fireworks ordinance has been on the future agenda since last summer, um, that'll take ten minutes. Then there's the snow removal policy that was on the agenda for like nine months, and then it disappeared. I served on that committee and gave a lot of my time, that, that's gone. Poof. Then there's the cannabis ordinance that's also been on there, um. My understanding, I, I could be wrong on this, this is, it's a, it's a revision to like allow consumption or something in town, which again is a good moneymaker for the town, that's quick and easy to address, so maybe that should be brought forward from the future agenda. There's a lot of people at Hedge Creek Falls, um, I was there for just two weekends at a table with a poster from Rite Aid and markers, and I collected twelve hundred dollars for that bear proof trash can that's there now. Imagine how much we can make if we charge for something like parking. And then lastly, the park and rec joint meeting, after the scheduled meeting that nobody attended. Um. They also have a lot of cryptic agenda items, in fact, they don't post their consent agenda or expenses, you have to make a request for that. Let's not sink to that level, but let's, let's try to set a date for, for that as well. That's concerning as well, and then the Public Works Building, when, any forward motion there? When is this building going to be built, twenty thirty? Twenty thirty five, maybe I'll be retired by then. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Council, um, I brought a few people in, so I'm assuming that you pulled those items from tonight's agenda. Is that clear?
I'll address that, do your comment, and then I'll address it. Again.
Okay. There's some people here that are going to need to know, and, and let's just start from the beginning, so this is a very small town. No, I don't have to do any of that. Okay, two eruptions, but we'll go ahead, um, next I erupt. Okay, so the, the first thing is, there is no newspaper, a lot of things like this would have hit a newspaper if we had it. Um, council is hand strapped the, by not having big audiences at council, and we all understand that. Um, but right now, we're kind of at loggerheads because we can't communicate, so I'm hoping that council realizes the opportunity to start dialogue before action. Um, my biggest issue with Cosmont was that in my poll, one business owner and one property owner was the only ones that participated, we need to correct that, we need to move things on. Things are kind of getting really bad, slipping back into Dunsmere's past. Um, there's a lot of talk and conspiracy as to the veracity and ethics of this council. And, and this council has made mistakes. Tonight's Brown acting is such a small thing, it's so easy to fix, but the point is, we're getting a little tired, let's, let's tighten it up. We have a lawyer, that lawyer is at our behest, we need to start using it, council needs to stop putting themselves out in front. I'm going to speak to one thing right now that's going to put everybody on a little bit of an edge, and I just want to be clear about this. Um, when Matthew got on council, he's one of those guys that liked to jump into the breach and start doing things, and he got right into the finance committee and started to try to make changes to make it more open and clear. Um, Matthew, when he had started to tackle the travelers, did the same thing. I told him at that time, I think it was a bad idea because of how it looks, and now because of how it looks, the whole city is a little uncomfortable over that issue.
Thirty seconds.
And I don't know why you do that, the whole point is, it's time to communicate. It really is. Anyway, I think Matthew is a very honest man, and if he wanted to make money, he wouldn't be in Dunsmere, this is the community he lives in. And I think we all do as councilmen contribute quite a bit to the city, and that needs to be respected. But we have real issues of communication, and we need to start communicating. My God.
Good time. For anyone who did miss it, for those two items, we will be discussing, then we will allow for public comments, and then they will be tabled until a special meeting next week. All right, any other public comment?
Yes, same time, communication.
You know, the reason I'm here because I want to know, somebody sent me later letter, it really threatening. You know, the reason I came to this town because the I liked it, and I start the good business, I want the counseling to understand, support to help business, not kill it. Nobody gonna come here with the money, dump them down in a hole, and you guys slammed this letter on my door, and slammed it, make me go down post office to side it. I am upset because you can communicate, we're not a big town here, you know? Twenty five years ago, the C D manager, the C D counseling went to Etna to invite me here and helping me to start the business, and I cleaned it up, but now big gentleman, a young man came all the way up here, and you guys did not even communicate, so, bye. That was the community need, and also I want to know that who signed the letter, I don't even know who they are.
Hmm.
How, what kind of authority they are sign, and they make me run down to post office, waiting my hand to hit it later. And when I go to the city hall, at who I need to talk to, to paint my building, or do something, I always want to follow to helping the city, to make city better. Uh, they send me over here, I caught it, gentleman, he say, I don't know what the heck you're talking about, Saintong. I went down three time with my husband, they send a guy over there, I don't even know who the heck, I talked to him, get what? He say, I'm not have any authority. What the heck is it? I don't understand, I hate to say it, but I am very upset. It's shame and shame and shame and all city, we should help it, bring people here, pay tax, make our city better.
Hmm.
It not, it that story business, you think the whole town, it's a shame. You know, I came here, I clean up, and the gentleman trying, even he make mistake, you should go there, hey buddy, you make mistake, I want you follow the rule, you know, I want to helping you, come on.
Thirty seconds.
Right thing, just all I understand, but I want to find out who is at this person, who side the table.
Okay.
And I want to know the name, what authority they have to abusing the authority, thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Saintong? Can I see the letter? Okay, can I see the letter? I just want to look at.
Keep sending me to wrong part, make, make in my head, right?
I'll take a.
I want to know, no, you can't.
I just want to look and see what it is, and then I'll get it back over to you. Right?
They, they may still be taking this time to talk about the same issue.
No.
Go ahead, it's a general public comment, if you'd like to make a general public comment.
Thank you. Ted Rivera, forty three ten Dunsmere Avenue. Um, thank you for this opportunity, uh, again, my name is Ted Rivera, I'm an owner builder currently resident legally residing in Dunsmere. I purchased the infamous Acorn Inn in February twenty twenty one with the intention of restoring it to once again be a premier destination for fly fishermen and their families. My business partners and my wife and my childhood best friend, and together we have built amazing projects in Santa Cruz, Santa Clara, and Siskiyou Counties. Our family has owned property in McLeod Mount Chassa Forest since sixties, and we've spent the last decade periodically improving our lots with the intention of vacation there seasonally. In the course of commuting Highway five, we fell in love with the old lighthouse, we had fantasies about what we would do, so when the Acorn Inn became available, uh, my wife and I thought we would purchase it, and we thought we could restore it to be the premier fly fisherman global destination it used to be. And so with that intention, you know, purchasing the Acorn Inn was a dream come true, the dream that could have become a nightmare as the residents, the drug activity, and the crime all had to be dealt with by anyone purchasing the property, the drug traffic that lined up there made uh Center Street look like the drive through at In-N-Out Burger, and the potential for harm and loss of property was a constant concern, the seller's agent informed me that many responsible investors attempted to look at the property, and with the exposure and the legal encumbrances, especially during COVID, you know, they, they, it was unattractive, but we were committed to help the Acorn Inn residents, and if we were successful, we could turn that neighborhood back to the good people of North Dunsmere who were afraid to walk their dogs and let their children play at night. So with love and compassion in our heart, we built relationships with those people, and we helped them financially, and we moved them personally, and we made a great transition into that property. Um, I was told by the agent prior to our uh purchasing that there was repairs that needed to be done, and that the owner was in discussion. The owner was in discussions.
So, don't continue.
Can I get five seconds? Um, the owner was in discussions with the plant building inspector about some repairs that needed to be done. So, we contacted them about the repairs, but I guess during COVID, we never got a reply from that initial uh initial submission, so as soon as escrow closed, we, we began to do the demo and the repair work to remove all the moldy and the um, the toxic materials and drug paraphernalia from the property, it took us literally months. Um, many of the circuits in, in the house were ran with extension cords, so we knew we had to make it safe, so we again tried to get a permit. And I believe June of twenty twenty one, we went with our own plans, because we always draw our own plans, we're owner builders, we have a legal right to build, and we were rejected for just a siding and window replacement, because our first intent was to beautify the space and return it back to the residents of North Dunsmere, and so uh, you know, we kept hearing from city we kept hearing from city employees, but anyway, I've gone through, through hell trying to make this happen, and what I've done is I've, I've written a letter that explains our situation in detail, I provided supporting documents to show my competency and my ability to continually get my permits executed, and I just want to give that information to you, because like, like the lady said, shouldn't be threatened. We shouldn't be in fear of the government that's in charge of, of our pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness. And there, there's just, has to be a way to allow competent owner builders to, to do their job, to invest in this community, and return this community to prosperity of what's new. And I'm not pointing any fingers, what I am saying is I'm pointing the finger at me and saying people like me need to come here. People like me who are proactive, who care about this community, need to invest in it, and, and I need your help to make it happen, do I have my thirty seconds?
You do, your time's up, but thank you so much.
Yeah.
And we'll take a look at this.
Enjoy.
All right, anyone else for a general public comment this evening?
Jake?
If it is on the building thing, I do request.
That's what I wanted to ask, I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's got.
We need to wait for next week.
Or, well, no, there, though, you can discuss it at the item later in the agenda.
We'll do.
Yep. All right, seeing no more general public comment in person, is there anyone on Zoom, please signify by raising your hand. All right, seeing no one in person and no one on Zoom, I'm going to close public comment for this evening, and we will move into item number five, council and staff comments. Sergeant Ortiz. And a, that letter for Saintong.
Mark Coras had his hand up.
Oh, you got, cool, okay.
Michael.
Oh, so, oh. There was Zoom, um. It already closed, but.
Thank you.
Mark, go ahead, or do you want to?
So you're.
Mark, we're unmuting you, we're opening public comment, we missed your hand.
I'll keep it very short, I, I just wanted to echo what others said. It's an amazing community we have, if we work together, we could do so much. I've spoken to many other property owners, all of us are having the same challenges, and everybody wants the same thing, to make Dunsmere beautiful, and to make it an extraordinary place. Why can't we work together, not? The, the city should, should be pulling people together, the owners together, and looking, and finding ways that we could, we could bring this, the beauty back into the town. I didn't meet anybody that had ill uh, ill wishes, but, but, but are, but want to work and make it beautiful, it was a beautiful presentation by both Saintong and, and the person that, I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name for, for the Acorn, thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, and, and thanks for.
And with that, I will close public comment for this evening. All right, um, Sergeant Ortiz.
Mayor. I live in Portus for April two thousand twenty four, uh, Sheriff's Office completed five hundred and thirty nine hours of service. Uh, during the month of April, we had a hundred and fifty nine calls for service, which is down substantially from last year, uh, which was two hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh, we took nineteen cases, uh, we had uh, four traffic related citation, and two cited releasing this here warrants citations, three misdemeanor arrests. Uh. We built eight disturbing the peace calls, uh, which is down from five from thirteen last year. Uh. Twenty three school checks, uh, trespassing was up of eight incidents, uh, they completed, we completed twenty two traffic stops, conducted the full welfare checks. Uh, the most notable event that jumps out to me is uh last month, the Chevron gas station being burglarized. The investigation continues, we're waiting on service uh. So I'm hoping we can narrow down the suspect soon. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. City Manager Reese.
All right. Mayor and Council, I'd like to address a number of concerns with the disinformation and lies being spread on Facebook about the city. There's a few facts that are missing from these comments, um, especially associated around the building, it's owned by Mr. There's a few facts that are missing from these comments, um, especially associated around the building. It's owned by Mr. Malanga. Mr. Malanga received a notice to register his buildings that were vacant under their requirements of the vacant and distressed building code. He did not uh register them. Then he outright refused to register them via email to me. He received multiple citations. The city received a complaint on the construction related work in the fifty-eight hundred block of Dunsmere Avenue being conducted without a permit by Councilmember Dave Keisler. And the city investigated this. These are the buildings associated with Mr. Malanga. I spoke with Mr. Malanga and he stated he was doing work involving plumbing and electrical in order to bring in a day spa. As well as concerns related to Mr. McIntyre, the building official and how he could not work with him. I stated I would have a discussion with Mr. McIntyre. Prior to me getting back to them, Mr. Malanga submitted a building permit and application for review. Prior to the review, the permit application was retracted with no communication to the city manager by the applicant. Work on his properties continued. The city code enforcement placed a stop work on the property in an effort to gain compliance with the permitting requirements. Mr. Malanga and his contractor requested a meeting with myself and the mayor. They requested special treatment to not have to work with the city building official or the code enforcement officer. Additionally, our request was made of the fire chief to complete an inspection for occupancy that was denied due to non-compliance and no formal plans or building permit. These interactions all took place online and were being promoted by Mr. Mario Rubino, the city treasurer. And Councilmember Dave Keisler also promoted these. To be clear, these acts are a small form of corruption, requests for favors, special treatment and demands. My city staff and contractors are bound by law to uphold the code and laws as written. Requesting the inspectors or code enforcement officials in attempt to open a commercial business and usurp the process places the tenants, consumers and general public at risk. I will continue to uphold the rules. The same expectation is set for all of my staff and contractors as well. Just because they got caught does not make the rules any different. Other law abiding citizens citizens are not having these issues. The city's perspective is much different than this perception that we are doing everything wrong at the city. The thousands of pages of regulations and code dictate our inspections and our enforcement actions. For this, I just wanted to clarify all of the ongoing rhetoric online and uh provide some actual facts.
All right. Thank you.
Hold on. Additionally, um, city staff over the last couple of weeks, uh, we've brought our new uh water tank online. Um, we uh our new wastewater permit is active. We've done uh new testing underneath of that. Um, we had the Cal Fire cleanup crews. They came in and cleaned up the parks here just uh last week. I cleared vegetation back for the Little League Park access and uh additionally, staff is now working through uh online work orders uh for uh through I Works and uh in the next couple uh in the next couple of meetings, uh, city staff will be bringing forward uh new street lighting design for downtown due to uh obsolescence of the current model. So we have to uh choose something different. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lucchese.
Thank you. Uh, I will be very brief today. Uh, so one of the things that we received notice on in the last week or so is that we will have to discontinue the Blue Bag Recycling Program. The Siskiyou Opportunity Center is no longer able to take anything that is non-C R B and the Blue Bag Program is unfortunately not able to keep the non-C R B items out of it. So they will be discontinuing taking the Blue Bag Program on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. They just notified us. So it's not something um, we really had a lot of notice on for recycling. So other individuals will have to go to the beverage containers that are located. We have one at City Hall still, correct? Yes.
Yeah, we're actually we actually have no way to get rid of that stuff. So we're
Not gonna have that either.
We are taking those away until we have a new solution.
Yeah, um, really happy to see our uh Board of Supervisor representative online and maybe there's something the county can do to rehire everyone in that department who's left. Uh, would be really great to get some guidance on solid waste with the county. Mr. Malins Wayla, it'd be great to have something from the county to do that. And Union Pacific Yard work has picked back up. If you haven't seen, we're putting the signage out for the in-water barriers at different points throughout the city. There are in-water barriers to prevent any oil getting back into the Sacramento River. The signage is really just to prevent any individuals in kayaks or tubing to beware that they are coming upon that area and that there may be some uh in-water barriers. Right now, working with the command team on different um uh uh kind of in a fixing type of mechanism for those barriers. They were going to put a line of wire over the Sacramento River, which we decided that was not advisable for safety. So we're trying to find different ways to make sure those are secure. And then you'll see a a number of stockpiles occurring for the resuming of the excavation and installation of clean soil. Uh, other items is had a meeting with representatives from the land use sector of Cal Fire yesterday. Um, as I've shared with our resilience planner, we don't have some good news that we will not have coverage from August till God knows when. Um, because again, Siskiyou County is behind on updating their local hazard mitigation plan. So if we do happen to get a fire after August and we don't have an updated local hazard mitigation plan under the state Cal O E S, uh, we will not be eligible for reconstruction dollars or on-site disaster mitigation. So hopefully there is a way that we can get that up and running. Most likely it will have to be a separate plan um to be in compliance with that. So yeah, super great. Having a great time. Same super great time. Please don't start.
Thank you. Councilmember Keisler.
Yeah, uh. I don't appreciate my name being thrown out there like it was. Somebody said something to me. I said something to City Hall. In no way did I have anything to do with all this. I'm a licensed contractor. My concern was making sure that they're having licensed contractors. Uh, I paid a lot of money and I jumped through a lot of hoops for the state of California to be a legal contractor and I am. So if somebody's working and taking work away from me that aren't isn't legal, I have a concern with that. That's all that was said. By going after these businesses that is what I see is happening, is no way what I want. I want a business to come to town. I want business to succeed. I want Dunsmere to thrive. I don't think we alienate people. We should be incentivizing these people to come and have businesses, not slapping them in the hands every time they do something wrong. That they that that Saintong, that's a hell of a lady right there. She worked her ass off and she 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 achieved that point where she was respected by everybody. And they helped her to get that way. That's what I'm encouraging us. Council, city staff, everybody to help these people get to where everybody's got, all it does is make the whole town thrive. You know, we we supposed to help each other, not not pick on them. Um. Railroad Day is coming up. Softball tournament's coming up. There's a thing going in the park. Uh, family night. Does anybody happen to know the date on that? Yeah, I figured.
I think uh May thirty-first. Um, I believe it's Wednesday the sixth. We're checking with this or seven.
Friday, May thirty-first at the ballpark. Uh, it's family fun night. There's gonna be all kinds of stuff. Last time the guy with the balloons tied the balloons, it was pretty cool. Everybody had a really good time. Free food, come on out. Uh, four thirty to six thirty. Uh, that's a good thing. Um. That's something else I was saying. Um. Yeah. Uh. Just so I where everybody fit where I stand. Uh, uh, we have a problem with the code enforcement officer. I don't believe he has the mentality for this job. We have a problem with the building inspector. I'm not sure of his qualifications. We are looking into that. And I I'm under the impression, the understanding that the uh our building inspector is doing roofing jobs here in Dunsmere. He's done.
My understanding is this item is later on the agenda.
He's on the, it's.
And so I'd I'd rather not.
My comments. You can't tell me what my comments can be.
All right, everybody. All right.
Anyway, yeah, our building inspector is doing illegal work. That is concerning to me. And um, I I I would like to expedite the evaluation of the city manager. I don't wanna wait till August.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to point out that um, as Ms. Hare was pointing out about the uh uh farmer's market, the Resource Center is a collaborative has uh arranged to take that over. And uh the good news of that is that um, working with uh Stephen Bryan and of course our local uh Resource Center. That means that there will be a countywide organization looking to bring in all the various vendors and all the various food sources and and really enrich each of the different farmers markets around the county. So we're really excited about doing that. I'm on the board of the collaborative. And it's really exciting, especially after Ms. Hare had taken it to such levels and know it's carrying on. I really appreciate that. Uh, secondly, the volunteer fair um is being postponed. Um, the chamber is in a change right now in terms of uh leadership and some of the things that were able to be done then aren't right now. So we're gonna be working it probably have it on a Sunday in June, but I haven't come up with a date for that yet. Reporting on uh building Dunsmere's future, um. One of the things that obviously I wanted to do and would be really excited to do was to have um, hundreds of people show up on a Sunday, a Saturday morning in May with uh blue skies and sunshine outside and spend five hours in a elementary school gym. But the good news was, even though we didn't have that, that the actual uh subtitle of the building Dunsmere or building future uh workshop was vision to action. And what we did end up with were the motivated and we ended up with about two dozen very motivated people. Andrea, Ms. Hare was there and um I even have a a quote from uh our city historian about his reflections on it. I wanted to share. He asked me to. I feel very rewarded to see a group of citizens come together with enthusiasm and imagination to join in developing positive directions for the town in communication, tourism and uh youth programs and information management. It was a very positive day and never was uh never was heard a discouraging word at last part in quotes. So the point is, is that what we um what we did is we went through uh history of the town. We started looking at assets and and right from the beginning, the tables were all very energetic and there was not a moment that I can remember where there was like sitting around and whatever. Uh, the next part was to identify all the assets and pictures from that show everybody rushing up with post-it notes, each one with a different thing. And so there was all that excitement about, oh, all these different things we can use to make the city better, make our community better. And then we had a lunch which was catered by the Culinary Arts Program at the high school. Um, and uh it just recently came back from Disneyland where they won an award for their uh um competition. So they're internationally awarded. That was very nice. And it was nice to be able to give those students a chance to be applauded by people there in their own community. Um, and then we got into the action team things and there were basically four different groups that kind of organically came together. One of them had to do with youth programs and that meant things like uh aquatic culture, um, things for teens to do after night, you know, all those kind of things. And so that table of about five or six, uh, which included the uh elementary school principal, who obviously was really tuned into it. Um, that group is gonna work in conjunction with the community school program, which is run by Susan Keeler, Keeler, the former uh principal and superintendent of the elementary school. The other project was information. And so what I'm doing right now is working with Discover Siskiyou to identify a piece of software that we could use that would not only be used for Dunsmere, but would be used around the county, which would allow one place that could be put onto any embedded in any um website or whatever, whatever city wants to use it that would have information on all the lodging, restaurants, events, itineraries, tours, everything that could go on throughout the entire county. And I have that as a centralized thing. So that'll be working with that group from the Building Dunsmere's Future Action Team Network. Uh, next we have a group that wanted to work on developing tours for downtown using Q R's and codes and things like that. And so they're working on tourism. And uh finally, uh, the one that I'm most working on is with uh city historian Ron McLeod and Angel Gomez, who's uh great, great grandparents actually started the uh Upper Soda Springs Resort back in the eighteen sixties. And we're gonna continue to work as we did on the, you know, you're from Dunsmere uh group to uh use social media to spread the word of the history of Dunsmere. And uh if you walk around downtown for the foreseeable future throughout the summer, there are about two hundred different colorized photos of the history of Dunsmere on the corner of the Big Lick, as they called it, uh, the Dunn's uh Travelers Hotel. Thanks to Vice Mayor uh Brian for lining that up for us. And uh so we're gonna continue to try and share just how exciting this place is and develop the community. And then we're also gonna continue to work these four action teams and see what we can spawn off of that. But just to give you a sense of the energy that was in the room, um, the counselor from the um elementary school, her name is Romali. Um, she mentioned as we were leaving that, you know, I was worried about coming in five hours in an elementary school and I said, I looked here and all of a sudden it's over. I couldn't believe it happened that fast. And then every one of the people that was there for that five hours immediately after it was over, organically got together and about fifteen minutes, everything was taken down. And that was the energy that was in the room. And I'm excited to have spawn that. It would have been nice to have a couple hundred people show up on a Saturday. That probably was not anything that would have been feasible. But what we did do was really something I'm excited about.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brian.
Yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to uh congratulate the community for having the water tank come online. That went by very, very fast, but I'd uh I'd like to congratulate Dennis for seeing that through. I know there were some difficulties. But uh the scope of it, could you let us know the overall grant and what it means for the city?
Well, historically, it means that the existing tank that was in place um was put in service in nineteen oh two, took off online in uh two thousand twenty-four. So it served the community for a hundred and twenty-two years. Um, it was a four hundred thousand gallon tank. We have the capability of almost a million gallons now in the new tank. And it will operate um and protect us for the years um throughout the town.
Well, thank you. Any of those.
It's been a long process.
Was it two, two point eight million dollar grant to to do it or was it more than that?
Yeah.
So this roughly.
Yeah, it was an SRF grant that's taken a long time to get there.
Mm hmm. Know, provide water to most of our our fine town. Well, I wanted to. Yeah, I'm not an Ackerman's. I'm private industry. So um I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, a couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to read a framed newspaper from many years ago uh in the neighboring building here in the fire department. I think it's a San Francisco Chronicle from nineteen oh three. And it describes a fire that took place in Dunsmere. But the quote, plucky people of Dunsmere were already busy rebuilding. Apparently, most of the town went up in flames and they got got right back to work uh rebuilding. I think it's fortunate that Dunsmere still has a plucky group of people uh trying to build within it. Um, unfortunately for all of us, uh, in my opinion, we live in the state of California where the regulation uh becomes more intense each and every year. Uh, how do we as a community that doesn't support California's building code values navigate that? That's a really messy situation. I will say, when I first got on council, uh sadly, it was less of an issue because there were fewer people like yourselves here commenting trying to improve the town with the building. So thank you for being here. Putting the work, putting your effort, your family, your vision, your dream, your money, your sweat into these projects. The city, as far as I know, and the community I know and love well, really wants things to be done well. They want things to be safe, but they're encouraging things to happen. We have not dealt with these issues for many years because as everyone knows, redevelopment has not occurred for decades. Uh, and that's a lot to make up. So I would encourage everyone to have some patience and perspective. But I, for one, as a counselor, am really happy to get Dunsmere to the point where uh it's very user friendly. Clearly, I'm hearing the user friendly aspect of interacting with the city is not serving everyone uh equally, shall I say. So I'm excited about that. But please recognize, uh, we live in the state of California and the engineering requirements today are not tomorrow. Let's work towards creative solutions. Um. I think this is wonderful that people are here who are focused on improving the town and redoing buildings. Because the thing I'm most excited about currently is our downtown redevelopment plan that we've spent the last I guess nine months or so developing was adopted a few council meetings ago. It's just the first step. We got a grant, professional company out of LA came in, analyzed our town, our region, our opportunities, our strengths, our weaknesses, and put it all together in a plan that we've adopted. The next stage is the most important. That was prepared by the consultants. What we do with the plan, what we decide is important, what we've decided we wanna move forward is up to all of us. decided we want to move forward is up to all of us. So I I had the great joy of being at all four of the meetings that involve the public with the Cosmont Group. And I personally reached out to uh countless business owners and building owners uh to be part of it. I even had building owners from out of state zooming in. Uh, not everyone, in fact, almost no one made it to all four of these meetings. So I would like, and maybe this gets into future agenda, I would like to have in the near future a summit that kind of summarizes the Cosmont plan and process. And we get the community's input on, there's a lot of goals there, like one that I think is very important is looking into a business improvement district. I would like a group with all the shareholders, stakeholders in the room. And it's not just building owners and business owners, although they're a very important constituency. I would like to see anyone who cares for Dunsmere's prosperity and revitalization attend this meeting um in the same spot. And we'll, we'll move the needle forward on, okay, we've, we've got this data, we've got these plans. What are we going to hold as goals sacred to our hearts and move forward? Um, and I'd, I'd like counsel to seriously consider uh allocating um the resources and scheduling necessary to make that happen. So I'm very excited with that. And I'll end my comments.
I believe uh.
I just wanted to, I just was reminded when you talked about uh the water tank, I want to commend uh the city manager and Public Works. Um, I'm on the commission as the supervisor of Valenzuela, the the local transportation commission, which hands out money for roads. And uh Mr. Valenzuela has always said you need to have some puck shovel-ready projects in hand because you did, you were able to get the Apple Street uh um project under underway. So Apple Street will be taken care of and congratulations on that.
Great news. Right. And then I believe we have one more staff comment from our Hazard Mitigation Officer.
I think this is on. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Stephen Decatur. I'm the Hazard Mitigation Planner for the City of Dunsmere. Um, I wanted to let everyone know, especially since we have such a packed house today, um that we are working on becoming a firewise community. And so what a firewise community means is that we're really just documenting all the fire mitigation efforts that our community is doing. Um, there's been a few different residents that have tried to make their neighborhoods within the community firewise before. Um, but it can be a lot of work, especially um for someone to handle just by themselves. So the city's kind of taking that on. Uh, you may have heard Linda Scheibin talk about this before, Kathleen Shirley and Sue Lang, they all kind of worked in their own neighborhoods to try to do this. Um, they weren't able to just because it got a little too daunting. So the city's decided to take this on and get the whole city of Dunsmere and the Fire District firewise certified. Um, so what that's going to do under the new legislation is give everyone a discount on their homeowner's insurance policy. Um, if you have the safer from wild, if you have the uh care, safer from wildfire.
Fair.
Fair plan.
Fair.
If you have the fair plan, um that will give you a ten percent discount. If you have a different insurance plan, it could vary on what that looks like, but the goal is to become firewise. Um, we're thinking that should happen by the end of the year. But one thing that I do need from you all in the community is I do need neighborhood captains. Um, that will help us disseminate information and also help us better track what works happening. Um, and what we're looking to do is just kind of track anytime you take down a tree, trim up your bushes. Um, anytime you do anything that could make your home safer from wildfires, we just want to document that. Um, and we also will be hosting community events. Um, you can be more involved and help us host those community events, or you can just be a disseminator of information. It's kind of however involved you want to be, but I am looking for those key people in the community who can help us um better track the things that we're already doing and who want to be more involved with this. Um, so if you are interested in that, please reach out to me. Um, you can come by City Hall. Uh, my name is Stephen Decatur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing this.
All right. And uh for me this evening, I'm just going to briefly touch on communication since it was brought up on a few of the uh general public comments and that is for us as counselors, we want to, we really want to help this community and help it move forward and help the citizens. And we really can't do that unless people talk to us. And I appreciate it so much when someone reaches out to me and I'm to talk to us. And just remember, there's multiple ways to get in contact with us, whether that's through email. Uh, all of our emails are listed on the city website. Another great option is just to go in, we all have boxes in City Hall and leave a note for us. Uh, the city staff is really good about making sure that we get any of those notes. So that way, whenever there's issues, there are multiple ways. If you just see us around town, make sure to talk to us. Um. That's what we're in this position for and we want to hear from citizens. So uh with that, we will move on to item number six, community reports. All right, uh I know Finance Committee met in that time. Were there any other committees that met?
No.
No. All right, with that, uh.
Yeah, so Finance Committee met, um. Did we meet twice?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we we have met twice. So uh at the first meeting, the Finance Committee got to dive into the study for the two eighteen for the solid waste. Um. The unfortunate news is uh, see, I got this S B thirteen fifty thirteen eighty-three, uh state law requiring all municipalities to provide curbside uh green waste pickup and recycling uh went into effect, I believe, four years ago, but rural communities had an exemption. We're really getting it up to the line by two thousand twenty-six. We have to have it implemented. So the increases you will see uh were developed by our consultant. He has a pretty thorough uh program that helps us project what costs are going to be. There's two things that work here. One, uh, our rates for solid waste have been actually low to draw down a heavy reserve we had acquired in prior years. And that rates being low combined with inflation the last four years, five years actually uh has has made us not keep up with the current costs relative to our fees. And the second thing is that law. That law has substantial new requirements that are incredibly expensive if they can even be done. Um, so that was discussed, the context of it. We did an interesting uh breakdown. We're trying to figure out what percentage of the increases that are scheduled in the new um fee schedule, proposed fee, fee schedule, what percentage of that were due to the law and what were due to just inflation. And uh we don't have it perfectly accurate, but it looks as if somewhere along the line of uh fifty to sixty percent is due to uh that law coming into effect. So when you see that, understand it's increased services that are mandated by the state. It's all too common story. Uh, the state easy enough for them in Sacramento to write a law that applies to all of us. We have to comply with it or we get fined. However, uh they don't provide any funding mechanisms uh for us to do it. So uh that is where we are with the two eighteen. Finance Committee did have the opportunity for a follow-up.
Yes, um, one important thing to note is, so when this law came through uh several years back, they did provide a waiver for small and rural municipalities. Uh, because all larger cities in California have had to comply with this law for several years. There is still a chance that in the next two years, we may receive another voucher waiver. And in that case, if the rates in this two eighteen are passed, we always have the option to not take them up as high if that, if we get another waiver or voucher. So when you're looking at these rates, these correspond to that scenario where we don't get the waiver or voucher. Uh. Or where we, yeah, and uh half the rates, rates cover those costs.
Yeah, although half of it is just an imbalance with uh we had lower rates purposely from many years ago. And inflation has occurred drastically in that time. So that that's part of it. Finance Committee didn't reach a recommendation on approving it uh to council. Uh, they wanted uh some further context and explanation regarding it. And I know uh two of the committee members took it upon themselves uh with the committee's blessing uh to meet with the consultant and clarify some things. And could you speak to that?
Yes, um, I can. Treasurer Rubino and I met uh with the city finance director and our consultant uh who helped prepare this plan. Uh, Treasurer Rubino had brought up a couple discrepancies uh with the numbers as they were uh presented in the report. Uh, so the two of us met uh and after probably about an hour to an hour and a half's worth of additional work uh with them, um we were able to correct the discrepancy in those numbers uh and come up with uh numbers that were a lot more accurate, even if uh slightly worse for the city overall. So.
Yeah, cuz.
Just really quick, we do have this item on the agenda, so there could be further comment later.
Yeah, definitely. Well, I want to go in with the Finance Committee being unable to fully approve it. The Finance Committee wanted to be assured that it was accurate numbers because there's nothing worse than raising fees and still not achieving our end of taking care of the services for the community. But I would like to step back. I'll go to the other very important Finance Committee meeting we had and just remind everyone if you weren't aware, the way city finances typically work, uh there's a general fund that is unrestricted. It could be used for anything. And all of our tax revenues that aren't restricted go into that general fund. It can go to offset anything if there's any excess, which there rarely is. Uh, and then we have at least three primary uh enterprise funds and those are fee-based. So we have to justify reasonable costs. We collect money based on bills to to take that and that's the water sewer and solid waste are the primary one. Solid waste has a waste taller. That's one significant cost. We redid the contract several years ago. So that's clarified and this new law is kind of getting to that. Um, the airport is uh arguably also an enterprise fund of the city. So uh with that kind of understanding, we're talking about that one enterprise fund. I want to let everyone know in this room that that fund is bleeding money drastically right now. It is underwater. So these rates ought to have been adjusted upward some time ago. Unfortunately, that new law is complicated enough that projecting the reasonable costs of those services has slowed us down. So we're, we're not in any trouble. Uh, you know, we have reserves to meet that in the general fund uh in the short term, but these rates are pretty dire relative to that fund where we figure out what it costs to provide the garbage service and we charge split around all the users that fee. So right now we're substantially below market and that'll be reflected later on. Um, but moving on to the other meeting we had, I'm proud to announce that the City of Dunsmere has accepted its audit and filed it. It's found on the website currently for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um. We always have traditionally had findings in our audit uh that kind of fall into two categories. Uh, one is process, how easy the audit was to complete by the auditor. One is more substance. Okay, what does the financial condition look like? How is it possible that this is happening and working? Um, and we have positive trends in in both. Um, I, I would say. So on the good news, um, we we were told it was the smoothest audit in many years um from the auditor. And that the education level of our finance director um is adequate to understand all the closeouts, particularly with a lot of the federal grants we have. It's, it's been a learning curve. Um, we've changed the type of audit we have to do. It's a single audit. And technically that that went smoother than it ever has. He did warn us that his general impression is not a lack of knowledge on our finance staff, but a lack of time and capacity. And that he feels strongly that if we could figure out a way to the, to get more time for our finance director to focus on it, um we might not have that particular findings with the process. As far as substance goes, the particular year we were looking at, um it was projected to be a small deficit year. Um, and thankfully, um the revenues came in higher than expected. The expenses came in about where expected. So it ended up being a slightly positive year in the whole for the general fund. Um. I don't know if we'll have the same good fortune to offset the projection uh for the current year we're in, but it was certainly positive news for uh that. And so if anyone's interested in the finances, Finance Committee meets typically the Monday before council meetings. Um, and so we'll be meeting next, not, not this next Monday, but the following Monday uh as well. We meet here at this room at three P M on Mondays. Um, it's a great way uh to get involved and get into the details and the weeds with finances if you, if you like those sort of things.
Uh, I have one more thing to add on the audit. Um, one thing we may see at council, uh a suggestion that the auditor may uh changes generally, as everyone on council knows, or anyone who usually attends council, uh whenever we have an item that affects the budget, um. At certain points, we amend the budget to reflect that additional spending. One thing the auditor did suggest is we also do the same for um revenue. Uh, so we and uh past budget amendments to show that we are getting additional revenue or less revenue uh as it comes in throughout the year. So moving forward in council, we may see budget um amendments that are both like uh but are negative and positive. It's more just when we realize it's going to be happening.
Right.
So let's say the T O T tax comes in significantly higher than what's in the budget. The auditor suggested that um Blake brings that before council and we do a budget amendment uh stating that our T O T tax is coming in to more better accurately reflect reality versus uh what's going to happen. That was one thing he suggested for us.
Excellent. Yeah. Are any questions for the Finance Committee?
All right. And uh with that, uh we will move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes from May second, two thousand twenty-four.
Before you go to the motion, um I do have a, a couple of uh uh amendments to request. Um. Motion to amend the minutes to include Debbie in front of Spagnola under public comment on page three of the agenda packet, page one of the minutes to add the name Brian in front of Wilson under the public comment, uh to add Peter in front of Art for the public comment. And as uh stated from member of the public, Allison Lashewski instead of Lukasey under public comment. Um, we had the first and last name of every other person under public comment. And so I was just hoping to follow that as well as address the misprint. Um, but if Mr. Kessler would like to move to approve, I would second it.
Uh, make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All right. It's been uh moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right. With that, we'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda, which consists of two items, the check register for four twenty-seven through five seventeen twenty-four and the Cal Fire Mutual Aid Agreement.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Uh, there's no public hearing tonight, so we will move on to item number ten, old business, Caltrans work outside normal business hours. Do we have an update on that from Caltrans?
All right. With Mayor and Council, we do have uh representatives from Caltrans here to uh discuss this item. It was uh tabled at the last meeting and uh so um it kind of just a, a back brief of what we discussed. It was uh their request was to go to uh hours outside of the normal operation hours for uh construction activities associated with the the southbound Interstate five bridge. So, you know, Nikki or any of your staff?
So I'm Nicole Mallory and I'm the resident engineer on this I five project. Um, I I've worked in Siskiyou County for sixteen years now and I grew up here. Um. So with me here is Michelle Fiesby and um the contractor on the project is Walsh Myers and Michelle was gonna let you know what their request is basically.
Hi, so my name is Michelle Fiesby. I'm a local resident to Dunsmere. I am the representative tonight for Walsh Myers Construction Group here with Nikki with Caltrans and the request for working outside normal business hours. Um. Her feedback from my team, demolition on the bridge has been completed. We're not expecting to do any kind of loud noise operations um outside of the business hours. However, we are planning to do some sort of layout um preparation work. Um, possibly some carpentry work, but nothing over certain decibels that would be offensive to the community in any way. So, um. That's where we are. So. If he.
Um, the question I have is, so that extra, is that like the rest of the day or is there like to midnight or eleven? From ten at night to six in the morning.
Correct.
What is it? From ten at night to six in the morning?
No, from six in the morning till ten at night. Would be the extended hours.
So you're not working all night? At ten, it, it, it says from ten at night to six in the morning. You want to work all night long. Is that what you're asking us?
There are certain times where our intention for this project is to be working mainly days. Um, it would, if we were to transition into night work, it would be um due to extreme temperatures. Um, at this point in our schedule, we are planning to work within most of the daytime hours. If they were to extend.
Is that your view? Have you seen this? It says uh you want to work from ten at night to namely six in the morning.
Nineteen AM to seven AM on the Walsh Meyer page, which is, what page are you looking at?
I don't know, but that's what.
Page twenty in the agenda packet.
From ten at night to six AM in the morning.
That would be
Oh, yeah.
Certain provisions or not certain provisions, but special edition for those operations as my team has informed me.
Um. So.
Our intention is to work mainly daytime hours.
So I have a question here for you. So um you know, there you're only working six days a week, correct? Or is it seven days a week?
Our typical day is five. We do extend it to six and there are some times that we do move into seven days a week.
Okay.
But our typical operations will be five.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I was just kind of wondering about the thought process behind instead of moving into additional hours and moving into additional days per week. And if that had been thought of, uh.
Yeah.
The company.
So currently our demolition has. So currently our demolition has completed ahead of schedule, so that would be the. Most noise conducive for creating operations. As far as moving into the next operations, we're going to be building forms and. Putting down the bridge deck. I think the intention for the letter to have the extended hours was so that we had the option. In case per schedule per weather that we do have the option and the city's blessing. To move into extended hours if need be.
Any more questions before we move into public comment?
Do you happen to have a heat threshold for OSHA specifically? Or does Caltrans have its own heat threshold that you make the determination that you cannot work within that temperature?
So there's a lot of different reasons why we would work. Part of it is due for OSHA standards with. Having people out in extreme heats and our workers, so it's for their safety. There are other specs regarding. Temperatures required for laying down the concrete. If it is too hot, it's not going to be per. Caltrans specifications, so. Because concrete is a chemistry, right? It's a very hot mixture. So when we're putting it down, we do have to pay attention to temperatures.
Are there any other special conditions outside of heat that you're concerned about for the upcoming construction season?
Not that I'm concerned about. It's mainly about safety.
Okay. And then do you have any onsite noise monitoring equipment? Again, you'd stated that you'd stay under certain levels. Typically, the general plan sits at sixty five decibels. Do you have any noise monitoring equipment to ensure that it would stay at that level?
I'm not certain what the structures group has as far as monitoring, but I can work with our team and get whatever. Could be recommended and to keep the noise levels to the correct decibels.
Good. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Any anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I will open up this item for public comment. Anyone would like to make a comment. And then after public comment during discussion, we may bring it back up for a few more additional questions if there's any questions we need to ask.
Yes, Mayor, talking about communication. This representative government bit earlier with public speaking, Mr. Chezy just walked out when I was speaking, but I understand. I do email you guys and I have. I never get replies other than you, Michael. You are a good one. You're the saint.
I'm gonna pause you here for a second, Mario is.
I'm talking about communication and it has to do with this item.
This item, okay.
Okay, so. The simple way for all you guys to do this is acknowledge receipt of the email. That would be communication. Now, there have been and not have been problems. It would be nice if council could. Email, be emailed, and you acknowledge it, or even better. We can list some city staff person that might collect the comments and send it forward it. To the staff to get answers because what we got today was a lot of non answers, but they've been doing a good job. So it's not particularly a problem. So the idea would be maybe council could start communicating.
Does this have anything to do with the request for hours for Caltrans?
Yeah, it did. And maybe if you were listening, you'd understand that if there was a problem, which there isn't a problem presently. We may have the ability as citizens to communicate with someone on staff or council appointed. So that you guys can have contact and information can be shared and problems can be solved.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone else have comment relating to this item?
Yeah, I do. Dwight Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue. The comments that I have is I'm glad Caltrans came tonight. But I think this one, they were behind on a project. They were attempting to get project going. But the special meeting, the meeting canceled last week, this is now gone on three weeks. I think they've already lost three weeks worth of time that a decision could have been made, right or wrong? Either either way on that, I think you should respect that, maybe allow the project to go forward. The other thing I'm commenting on is the exact same weekend after you met city council three thirties ago. You guys do realize that the railroad worked consistently night and day on Lower Sacramento Avenue, putting in the concrete ties. I don't know if that was approved, but it's just funny that you stalled on Caltrans for three weeks and that the railroad made noise all weekend.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on this item? Anyone on Zoom, please, if you'd like to make public comment on this item, signify by raising your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. All right, and we'll move into council discussion. Let's remember.
I have concerns. For veterans, for deer, animals. I just have concerns. And I'm not going to lose my sleep and that's out my back far back.
I'm closer.
Councilmember.
I just would request that if you do have to go into extra hours, notify the city so there's some form of communication there and we're aware of it. Maybe we can find out who might be affected by whatever. I know that the jackhammers aren't going on anymore right now. It's all taken care of.
That's correct.
But you know, just the idea of communicating because there are people that live down and below there that are going to be affected by whatever noise goes on. So that's all I'm concerned about. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the overall scope of the project and what the timeframe looks like going forward. So to give us a context for what you're trying to do this summer.
Okay, yep. So this summer, we're of course working on the Sacramento River Bridge, so that's replacing the southbound bridge deck. But the project overall, my answer in your question, right? Okay, the project overall is reconstructing the roadway. So we're working on the portion surrounding Mount Shasta right now. We just finished a portion near Truck Village that we just opened. And then later in the season, we'll be working on kind of the middle portion between Abrams and Truck Village. So this season, basically, we're looking at getting all the roadway, the major reconstruction roadway work done. And the bridge work. And then next season, there would just be like more like minor items of work to complete.
Okay, and for the bridge itself, we were originally told, I think, four years ago, that it would take a year to get the kind of ramped up, the bridge underneath. Then a year to take the deck down, put a new deck on, then a whole year. Because our park is very negatively impacted by this project.
For sure.
Then a whole year to take everything down. Can we get everything? Are we on track to potentially take everything down before the winter or would that be a next year project?
So basically, the bridge work will go through October, so the deck probably, I mean. Most of the bridge work will be completed by November, but then, yeah, all that false work, all that stuff underneath has to come down. And right now I think it's planned to be done throughout the winter depending on, you know, the type of winter we have. So it would hopefully be wrapped up in the spring and Michelle can add if.
Then is there any plans currently to restore the vegetation down there? Obviously, it went from beautiful Aspen Grove to a giant twenty foot pile of base.
So that is being discussed and looked at. And, yeah, we're we're looking into that, but I'm sure we'll be doing some kind of restoration work. I just don't exactly.
If you could partner with us and what that looks like, because it is an active park, we'd appreciate it. Not that it has to be restored exactly like, but we'd we'd like it to work for what we have down there. And then last, maybe last question. What the current decking was put on in the fifties, am I correct? There were there was dismantled?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was nearing the end of its lifespan?
The deck was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. What is the current lifespan of the decking you're putting on now so I can?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what the lifespan is. I would. I would think it would be at least that, if not more. It's it's similar construction to what was there before.
Okay, and then I just want to congratulate the engineers from the past and I think the twenties. The arch is still totally fine. Is there any structural? Shoring up that's occurring with that?
Nope, nope.
Well, there was reinforcement and some repairs made into the arches and the base work, but yes. It has remained and that's historic integrity.
Okay, just a curious question. I'm sure everyone wants to know what? What got messed up from last year's concrete going northbound up to Mott? Because it was brand new concrete. We're so excited about it. Now you're cutting into it in sections over towards the left.
So that concrete was placed in two thousand, I believe, basically from Dunsmere to Mott Road. That's the section you're talking about, right?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that was old concrete. So we're just replacing some panels that have cracking in them. The new concrete started at Mott Road and goes north from there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, any more discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
Well, I for one think that it's important for Talindali to get this project cleared up as soon as possible, so.
I was gonna recommend an extension to five A M. To eleven P M. I don't think twenty four seven is appropriate with how. I don't know if both of you were on the previous project that we did allow to do twenty four hours. It didn't go well with residents as well as being a little bit combative with the Caltrans workers. And so I don't think twenty four seven is appropriate. But I'm happy to support a motion to extend it from five to from five A M. To eleven P M. If the council is on board with that. That at least gives at least four additional hours a day.
If we do do that, I would also like, well, I know you have said that you're going to be doing. I would like to make sure that if there is louder work, it's being done during the day. The other thing I'd like is I know you said you have, if we do go that route. Do you have a decibel monitor onsite and I would like. That information to be shared with us. For those extended hours. I don't know if you could just send an Excel spreadsheet over.
Yeah, we can definitely work with that. My only. I appreciate the extension in the hours and that would be fantastic and we definitely can work within that. Like I said, our intention is to work within the day. My only concern at this point is if we do reach extremely high temperatures and there is a moment where we have to switch to night work. I do not foresee it happening with how everything has been moving forward. We've been able to accomplish everything during the day. I would just have that caveat that like we may be able to work and communicate with the council if we come up to a point where. It's a hundred and twelve and we go into a heat wave for two weeks and we cannot actually have men on site during the day to work. And to keep this within the schedule that we can work with the city council on having night hours.
If that happens.
Yeah.
The bachelor's. But honor the eleven o'clock.
So I'm happy to make a motion to approve outside work hours for the Caltrans bridge project to total. For the hours of five A M. To eleven P M. Seven days a week.
I'll second that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
And the deer appreciated.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number eleven, new business, item number A, Railroad Days Street Closure Request, Railroad Days Committee.
All right, Mayor and Council. Before you today, we have the annual. Annual road closures for the Railroad Days activities starting in June seventh. And so there's a summary outlined within the memo just behind the map on page twenty three. And page twenty four and twenty five. And so. I don't know that I have any concerns generally. I don't know if. Rich, you have anything you want to speak on associated with the alcohol, but. It's, you know, pretty standard. We're getting. We're used to it, so we're just, we'll work with them and collaborate to make sure. All the walking traffic is safe.
Thank you. Hey, do you want to just briefly go over what you're requesting?
I certainly will. Sandra Hood, six two three five, Hill Street. Okay, so it's the annual Railroad Days Committee, Friday, June seven, Friday, June seven, Saturday, June eight. And Sunday, June nine. We're asking to block certain streets at certain times during the day. It starts on June seventh. We will definitely need the upper portion of Pine Street blocked. From three P M. On June seven, all the way to. Six, seven, actually, seven P M. Is a better time on Sunday, June nine. We get all the vendors out of there and make sure any of the junk they manage to leave behind is also removed. The big thing for June seven, Friday, June seven is the entertainment, which we ask that we can use. The North Parking Lot for the main stage and also for a beer booth, which will be cordoned off. We would like to extend that courting off area. Courting off area for the beer booth to also include the cornhole tournament area, which will be. Held down on that spot right in front of the community garden is pretty much what we. Community garden not going past the Dunsmere Resource Center. So we, that section will be cordoned off so the cornhole people can go ahead and buy a beer and then go over. But there will be barricades. We will also have signs. On the outside of those barricades that say no outside alcohol allowed. And we will also have signs posted that say no alcohol beyond this point. Although occasionally people do like to carry their beer with them down to the vendor section. But I have to say, if that's a concern with the city, it doesn't happen very often. Saturday, as soon as the music is over, which should be done by eight thirty that evening. Excuse me, nine o'clock that evening at the latest, we can open the streets again, so people will have access. Now let me back up there. We don't need it blocked off on Dunsmere Avenue. From Pine to Cedar does not need to be blocked off on Friday. Everything will be continued there. The big activities start on Saturday, so we do need from Pine to Cedar closed. We'd like it closed as early. If it could be six thirty, that'd be great. Seven is fine. The reason I'm saying that is there's always somebody who's still parked there and it takes as well to get them out of there. Cornhole will be down at this end on Dunsmere Avenue. It'll pull out of the way when the parade starts going by. And Sergeant Ortiz already knows about the closing, so we can detour traffic beginning eleven thirty that morning. So the parade can go easily at noon. It'll turn left on Bran Center. Turn left on Sacramento Avenue and pretty much go back where it started. It'll be finished. We then do need to have Pines, Dunsmere Avenue closed from Pine. To Cedar for the rest of the day. And then we'll open it up again as soon as the vendors close. Entertainment on Saturday night should got, should not go past nine o'clock. Then Sunday morning, we have the car show on Dunsmere Avenue. And I I know in the initial letter I gave you, it said Soapbox Derby on Saturday. But the gentleman who's inheriting it from Councilmember Kessler wants to do it on Sunday. And he wants to do it from ten A M. To twelve P M. And that would be barricading just. Then it's just south of the Spruce, so we'll leave the Spruce intersection open, correct? Okay, so it'll be from Spruce right there at the parking lot next to Children's Park. And Soapbox will and just before Gary's Pizza. Then from Gary's Pizza to Cedar is where the car show will be. And those people will usually show, even the car show doesn't show up till one. But those folks show, there are a couple of them show up at eight thirty. They're ready to get their car in there. But those folks show, there are a couple of them show up at eight-thirty, they're ready to get their car in there. We would keep that as soon as the Soapbox Derby is over. Then that portion from Spruce to Pine will be open again. We will have detour signs that direct people to go down Lower Pine and Travers down Sacramento, if they have to come up up to Cedar. There's entertainment all three days.
Second, I'd just like to remind everybody that the acoustics in this room are really bad, so if we could please keep quiet and. Sorry, continues.
Uh, let's see, we do, we would like to have the use of Children's Park for Kids' Own Revive Church is gonna do that again on Saturday. Then there are gonna be a couple of activities on Sunday in Children's Park. And I don't know if I made that clear in my notes when I gave you the presentation. Vendors are on Pine Street, Friday afternoon, they start setting up at three. And they are, they will be closing up, most of them start closing at five, but it takes them a while, everybody to jostle. Jostle each other and get out, get their equipment in, their trailers, whatever, to get out of there on Sunday. And, um, last year we were out by six-thirty, and some of them helped me clean up dead pop-ups that were left mangled. This year I have asked vendors, in the notes, I said to vendors that you are responsible for taking those things with you, please. The only other thing is the earlier we can post road closures in those different sections, uh, the better it might get into people's minds that, hey, maybe I shouldn't park there at that time. The other thing is I would like to use the four parking spots on the south of City Hall. It's up against that old retaining wall, whatever building that used to be. Um, that's a good spot, I found out last year, to stick entertainers that come in. Um, it's, they're tucked away, they're not using the spaces, the other parking places. Uh, it just gives them a good place. Uh, right now, the, um, City of Weed will bring, bringing in the stage seven, seven-thirty AM on Friday night. I think that's about it.
All right, uh, questions?
Is this a Chamber sponsored event?
It's a chamber, yes. Days Railroad Days is a member of the Chamber and it helps us cover the liability insurance. So they are a co-sponsor of the event, but we're our own little.
Yeah, I, I, I've heard of a couple of different groups that were eager to be involved. Have you built a bigger coalition of groups that are also part of the?
I know we have the core group that comes in, just got a Cisco, um. Rotary's having pancakes, can I get pancakes delivered?
I assume no luck with, uh, actual railroad, uh, cooperation.
Uh, you know, UP has just a different way, you know, when this all started, this was a big railroad town, it was a big SP family thing, and it's, it's just changed over the years because of the, um, the, the job situation, the demographics, everything has changed, you know.
I would appreciate it if you'd maybe reach out to the Blackbeet Center for Railroad Culture, I know they would like to be involved because they, they love railroads as much as anyone. Um, and there might be some other railroad historical groups, um, they may already be involved.
With some of them and, um, it just depends on the situation, um.
Well, I'd just like it to be the most inclusive event it can be. And, uh, there's so few people that love trains the way they may be used to, because it's not part of your everyday experience the way it used to be. I think it'd be wise to capture as much of the enthusiasm for the railroads as we can in the event, but I do appreciate the work you put into this event.
I did meet somebody from Roseville recently who said that they argued, what's the big engine that they used to bring through here, big?
Oh, the big boy?
Big boy.
You know, a couple of years ago, that big boy was, they were, they said they were bringing it, they were bringing it, it was gonna come in July. We formed, we're a small little ad hoc committee to be ready for it.
They didn't show up.
Yeah. But there are a lot of YouTube pictures of it showing up everywhere else, yeah.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Growing up here, this is my favorite part, uh, and I heard it got shut down a little bit because of some issues with, uh, preparation, et cetera. Is it possible to bring the Pi Social back as part of this? I'd be happy to help with that.
Actually, when the Pi Social first happened, it was in conjunction with Railroad Days. And then they decided because of the logistics of keeping the museum open and having the pies up here. That was better if they just turned the museum into a pie center, and that's how it ended up on Memorial Day weekend. Uh, there hasn't been until what, two thousand seventeen, I think is when it finally.
Well, I'd love to talk with you about getting it going again, I don't take a lot of time, but I always think about that every year.
I know, and it's a depot society thing that, and I know their numbers have dwindled also.
Okay.
And we've also, they got hit with, uh, updated environmental health laws.
Uh, we can work on, maybe how to resolve that, but.
Right, well, um, unless there's any more questions, all of this stuff for public comment. All right, so that I will open up this item for public comment. If anyone has any comment that they would like to make specifically pertaining to this item, now would be the time, same rules as general public comment. Three minutes, thirty-second warning, please state your name and address, uh, beginning if you would like. If you do choose to state your name and address as your personal sentence, I will not start your time until after you have done your name and address. Right, with that, anyone, public comment on this item?
Uh, thank you, Matthew, for bringing up the brownies and, uh, Pi Social was pretty much killed by the fact that the Health Department said you couldn't make them at home and the organizers just couldn't deal with it. They did try to make them one year in the Parks and Rec Building, but, um, it just was like too complicated.
Yeah.
It would take, and the reason it doesn't exist, it would take the energy of one person to, to get it coordinated again. And it's, it's was really well supported. The, the big issue is, is simply getting another person to take Phyllis Salco's place. And, uh, Phyllis is not in that kind of shape.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, any other public comment this evening on this item? Seeing none, I will. Seeing none, I will go close public comment.
I'm making a motion, I guess making a motion to approve, uh, what they asked for.
May I? Motion to approve the proposed road closure as presented on pages twenty-one through twenty-five of the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four Special City Council Meeting Agenda Packet. And approve the request for an ABC event license for the twenty-twenty-four Railroad Days event.
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor? Um, I suggest that it's okay with the rest of the council members that we, uh, move, uh, B and C since we have a lot of folks that are here for C and, uh, B could be kind of, uh, tiresome.
I would like to request to not do that because I'll be refusing myself from C and leaving for the rest of the evening. Um, so I would like to continue as presented as possible.
All right, on that light, we will just move on to item number B then. Solid waste rate discussion and possible action authorizing a five-year rate scheduling. And city manager?
All right, Mayor and Council, um, as a part of the two-eighteen process, we're required to send out a forty-five day notice prior to a public hearing. And so we are, um, staff is requesting to be able to send that notice and all associated documentation to the residents or, and, and also, um, make sure we're with that compliance of the two-eighteen process, so. Um, a number of the points were already, uh, kind of addressed by, uh, Councilmember, uh, Brian. Associated with, uh, where we're at in the solid waste fund. Um, we, uh, used to have a surplus and we were intentionally drawing down our, um, our fund. At some point, um, we also, uh, renewed our waste hauling contract and this, uh, came in higher than projected and, uh, subsequently that and, uh, tipping fees have substantially increased within the previous time period and it caused us to be at a deficit. Um, the above and the higher inflationary expenditures also are contributing to revenues, not meaning expenditures. Um, additionally, uh, January one of twenty-twenty-seven, starts a mandate to collect recyclables and green waste from, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three. Unless of course that is extended, we kind of addressed that earlier in council member comments. And then, uh, our current street sweeper is also past its life expectancy and we have to plan to replace that. Staff will need to notify each you, each user about the opportunity to protest the rates at a hearing. The above notice needs to be mailed with at least forty-five days prior to the hearing. So, and I don't have, I was not at that meeting for, to provide the details associated with what they discussed, but, uh, I was on vacation. But I do know that it's, we are seeing a pretty large increase.
Yeah, it was, uh, the first four years, it's a nineteen percent increase in the proposed plan, uh, so very drastic. Um, but that's due to the late hour at which we're increasing it, um.
Is the study, is the study publicly available currently?
Um, I believe they're making the corrections, but I, I have not gotten the corrected version.
The, the, the draft version, at least the, the scale of the increase is approximately nineteen percent, uh, for the first four years and less on the fifth year for the schedule.
It was slightly different than that after the correction, it's just a touch higher.
Yeah, and I wanted to actually touch on that, it says both committees recommended moving forward the rights as proposed. Finance Committee, um, certainly was in consensus that we needed to move forward with this process. But, uh, hadn't quite got down to that level of support, we were dealing with the details of the, the system and what the number should be accurately. Um, the other thing Finance Committee had consensus on was, uh, the rate study proposed raising rates at the soonest possible opportunity, because the longer you wait, the worse it gets. But it didn't necessarily allow for the process to happen the way we would like. And we think it's a good idea for council to approve the, the exact notice that goes out. You know, since it's gonna represent. So if, if, I don't know how we do it in conjunction to that, but we prepare the actual notice that would be included in the letters. That's something Finance Committee felt strongly about.
All right, um, one other thing I'd just like to point out here on, uh, behalf of, uh, President Rubino is where it says fiscal impact, yes, and budgeted item, yes, um. I really would like to see a change in this form to show that if it has been included in the budget, because currently the changes we've made are not included in the year's budget. And then budget amendment would be necessary, so where it's a budgeted item, yes, I, I think that's just a little bit confusing, um. It'd be nice if we maybe change the verbiage moving forward, um, because I find that to be a little bit. Exactly for people. All right, uh, any other council questions before we move into public comment? All right, with that, I will open up this item for public comment. Uh, same rules as general public comment, three minutes, thirty-second warning, and, um.
Something as important as this really requires more than three minutes. Um, I do want to state that we all agreed in Finance Committee, we were checking for the veracity of the number. Not deciding whether it's okay or not. I don't think that was Finance Committee. The city has made a couple mistakes in passing rate hikes, the sewer hike, for instance. Was a big mistake by a simple number. The now current sewer rate is looking at being raised again. Again, for many of the same reasons, I just want to be clear that Finance Committee didn't agree to the rate, we agreed that we think the number proposed is a reasonable number. So council makes the decision whether to do the rate hike, and as a citizen and someone that's suffered through quite a few rate hikes, I want to say, I think instead of council proposing the rate hike, which nineteen percent is gonna be pretty severe. The next year after that is nineteen on top of that, it's a compounded interest. Um, I think we should look at some factors, one of the factors, I think is the city's general fund is growing because of tourism. And the, that part of the economy is about two-thirds. The actual property taxes is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The average income hasn't been going up, inflation's been going up. And we most certainly could afford to keep the town clean and beautiful for tourists if we moved street sweeping and the trash cans in the, the district, commercial district into general fund. By doing that, we can reduce any impact and reduce the amount of money that needs to be saved for our solid waste enterprise, which is basically billing and the others are contracted now. I realize that it seems difficult, but the city's in a financial position much more than the citizens to afford a street sweeper vehicle. And the cost of picking up the garbage cans went from forty thousand last year to eighty thousand this year, and more unlikely will go up again because they're city employees. I think we may want to investigate that before moving forward on a rate hike. I know it's a little radical, but I think we might want to, if we want to be successful at our rate hike.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item this evening? Seeing none in person and no one with their hand raised on Zoom, I will close public, uh, comment on this item for council discussion.
I guess if I may, uh, one correction is that a majority of the increases actually due to tipping fees that are occurring at the transfer centers, it's very expensive to transport. Um, and I was hoping to have a copy of the study with this to kind of state, you know, specifically what's going on with the rate study and what we took into account, so it can be more transparent to the public. Um, so I'm not comfortable moving forward with the process at this point. I would like to schedule a public forum to allow public comment and input on the proposed rates and a post of the study for public review and then return to city council with the proposed notice and, uh, input from that, uh, public forum. Uh, we've done it in the past with the rate study and I think it's been super successful, uh, Councilmembers Kaisler and Councilmember Deutsch. Um, were really instrumental in some of the previous rate studies and that was one of the things that did really well is we brought in the consultant who did the rate study to answer any very specific questions along with the financial models. And I think, uh, having something specific to that would be really helpful for members of the public and to deal with any misinformation that may be put out on what is and is not within the study itself. Um, and so I plan to make that motion if no one else has any other.
Uh, I heartily concur and second.
Yeah.
So I guess to formalize it for you, Wendy, it's a motion to schedule a public forum to allow public comment and input on the proposed solid waste rate study and to post the study for public review. Prior to that piece, um, then return to city council with a proposed notice for the two-eighteen process and the input that was gathered from that public forum. Um, and if we could, I know we're, uh, I think, believe over the budget with the consultant, but I think it would be really helpful to have him available to address any specific questions. Um, again, you know, it's just really important to know what is in the study, what isn't in that study. Um, prior to doing that and then gathering that input from there.
I agree, as. I was not a member of the solid waste committee, but thank you, Councilwoman Lucchese, for taking that on over the years. Uh, if you could help us understand the reality of the implementation of these new laws, because it with this rate increase, it's necessary, we are increasing our services, and I think that'd be good to highlight as well. Because the numbers on the page don't really express the positive services you'll be receiving.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's kind of a three-fold thing, so one is Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which requires a three bin system pickup for every, uh, individual household as well as commercial properties. Um, so you will get a green bin, a blue bin and a, you know, your, your typical bin that you have now for trash to landfill. Um, that is part of that state bill. The other thing to take into account is the tipping rates have been consistently increasing. Uh, the county has taken over the transfer stations and it's looking at balancing the budget related to those mechanisms as well. Unfortunately, solid waste is very heavy and very costly to, uh, take to other facilities. Uh, the other piece too is that our, uh, we are also regulated by the California Air Resource Board, also known as CARB. Uh, and CARB has new regulations that has taken place on large vehicles like the solid waste, uh, dump trucks that you see with higher emission standards, as well as moving from diesel in the next couple of years. And so those three things in particular are probably the largest, uh, costs that we're going to be facing in the next uh, nine years actually, and one of the things that we discussed within the solid waste committee prior to putting the study to the Finance Committee is that this is actually part of a nine-year plan um, to address all of the changes within those three items as well as the budgetary deficit. And that even after the five-year rate study that we did, um, propose to the Finance Committee for review and propose for city council review is actually still not going to make the solid waste enterprise solvent. It will take another four years after that, but per the two-eighteen. Is actually still not going to make the solid waste enterprise solvent. It will take another four years after that, but per the two eighteen process and the elections code. Uh, we are only allowed to do a five-year study and so we will have to come back after that five year for another, at least four years. Um, of potential increases, but they are much smaller than nineteen percent um, in that longer term. Uh, and then again, we, that would change if we were to get additional waivers for the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three implementation. Um, so on top of that, we are trying to look for other ways to lower the cost to utility rate peers. Um, Stephen Decatur, who is here, our hazard mitigation planner is working on other grants to be able to take green waste and woody material. Um, there is uh, opportunity to look at cow recycle for additional food products, um, composting as well as anaerobic digesters. Um, and so we are trying to look for other options available, um, but this was the best that we could um, at the time without having to. A too large of an increase proposed.
Thank you.
Alright, and uh, council member Deutsch, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I first got started with uh, the city um, over nine years ago with the Prop two eighteen. That eventually put in the water system and I've been involved in I think three or more other Prop two eighteens over the nine years. And to me, the most important thing and the way that we were successful was starting right from the beginning with the way that we talked about it. Was right up front saying, all we're doing right now is taking the costs and figuring out how we can make it work and how we can do this in a way that. Minimizes the uh, the stress on, on the individual player. So. As you move forward, I, I think the key is, is to keep that same philosophy and so you can sit in a meeting. And show the numbers and make them all add up and everyone understands that there's no, you know, funding stuff going on. I think that's the key to getting a successful two eighteen.
Anything else? So there, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Actually, since you mentioned the contractors over budget.
We will have to present the budget amendment if we are over budget.
No, we'll, we'll reach, I don't know what it is, so I can't. Yeah, let me. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to the contractor and we'll discuss, we'll discuss this specifically on, on what that'll take and then I can bring it back. Because most likely with the holiday and, and getting everything. Um, we're not going to uh, get it set before the June sixth meeting.
Okay.
So we'll try and have, I'll have some numbers associated with the budget amendment uh, prior to that engagement.
I think regardless of whether we have a consultant there or not, I would still sit with my motion to have a special forum for people to be able to ask questions. At least, uh, even if we're not able to get the consultant there at that time, but I think it's still something we need to do to run through.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, and uh, with that, we will move on to item number C, building official.
Did we take a vote?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, building official contact.
And through the chair, I will be recusing myself to a co- due to a conflict of interest on this item, so thank you.
Right. Uh, any other recusals or anything along those lines before we get into the item? So, um, I'm going to remind everyone before we get into this on both item C and D. Um, due to the uh, Brown Act, uh, we will not be making any determination on these two items tonight. Uh, we will be doing a special meeting next week where we bring both of these items, number C and number D back. Um, but what we will be doing tonight is running through everything up through council discussion. And then it will be tabled until that special meeting. I know since everyone was showing up here, I wanted to give everyone a chance to. Uh, go through public comment, um. Uh, and not waste everybody's time for showing up. So with that, um, we're going to start off item C. Uh, a little bit of the history on this one, if there's been. Uh, there's been some feedback from the community uh, relating to the building official and we felt that it was important to put this on to. The agenda, um, to review the contract and this stated it. I know some people questioned, or there was just basic questions regarding, um. His interactions with various members of the community and, um. With that, I'm going to open that up to council questions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I find it odd to have council participate too deeply if it's not correctly noticed and we're for that reason delaying it, so.
Fair enough.
I, I would like, I would like to just have pure public comment and remind council, we're happy to discuss this, but I really want to. But if it's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to.
But we will listen to you and we will talk about it next week.
Yep.
And for that, I am going to let everyone know here, just because we do have a decent amount of people to make sure. Everyone gets a chance to talk. Um, I am going to hold everyone to that three minutes on this item. However, I would like to remind everyone that since this item is coming back on another agenda. That will actually allow everyone to have two, three minute comments. So if you don't be, if you aren't able to fit in your three minutes today. You will be able to fit in an additional three minutes at the next meeting on this, on both of these items. So with that, I will open item number C for public comment, same rules as before, three minutes, thirty seconds warning. We'll do it very, everyone in person first and then move on to Zoom. Uh, and with that, take us away.
So cancel, um, I think. We've done well at uh.
One second, just reminding everyone in the audience to respect everyone's time is. It is, uh, the acoustics in this room aren't the best, so if we could please not have any conversation or discussion. While a member of the public is speaking, just so you know Mario, I did pause your time while I made that statement.
Um, you, once again, uh, as I predicted and told everyone, these guys have put it at the end of the agenda. And uh, you'd make us sit it out and we're out. There's been several people that have left. So I hope the next meeting you have a courtesy, the courtesy to put it as an only item. And that we can have this conversation in real. I don't know why Luchesi left, she does have the right to, to leave. But I am totally un- uncomfortable with making us sweat it out, wait it out, when the only reason these people were here was this month. And several people have left, several people with building problems. My problem with the building department and the city staff of Dunsmere is communication professionalism. And I have seen it exhibited in residential and in commercial. I've seen it for over a year. I have neighbors that have done nothing but complain and where I work next door, Steve Rice, the guy did a house. Three times he hired electrician. That city inspector didn't come as promised. He would not accept anything but a phone call and he didn't return phone calls. I'm telling you, the word is out on him and the entire county and I understand where you guys are at. I know that staff and Matthew earlier tried to say that it's something to do. With people not wanting to conform to the rules and the building codes in California. That is a bunch of frapping poo. This city is built into two mountain sides. There are issues that will never be able to meet building codes. We're just gonna have to deal with it. We need an inspector with experience in commercial work that or. A planner that can help these guys get through this. This is our city, this is our tax base. The story, and it won't be enough, is when you go into the wheelhouse, you look at those arches and stuff, that was my sweat. The floor sinks, I carried all the rocks from underneath those boards and threw them in rollaways to do it. Did you say, did you say time?
I said thirty seconds.
Oh, um, and I'm going to tell you. I was all done, gonna go up to Mount Shasta and do my tyco festival, which I do every year. I get a call from the old lady. Toilet's backing up. First week we're open, we're busted, we've spent every penny. The owners of the property has spent every penny, that's why we're in putting a business in it. That thing, the city council. Figured out the lateral wasn't there and should have been there. They allowed me to do the work. We hired a class twenty plumber to put in the pipe.
Mr. Rubino, that was.
I appreciate it and thank you, Michael.
We'll have three more minutes next week.
Excuse me, may I add a question?
You may, so just so everyone knows, um.
No, I'm not going to talk really long.
Well.
The reason I'm here.
I just want to let everyone know the procedure for asking a question. So the way it works is we cannot, once someone starts their public comment, which I'll let you start in just a minute. We cannot answer or, because that would be according to the Brown Act, interrupting the public comment. So therefore, if any questions are asked, um, we can then choose, once we get through to then provide an answer if any of us have that. Answer or so choose to. Um, so you're more than welcome to ask a question during your public comment. We just can't do anything until after you are completely done with your public comment. So that is the basic procedure on that fact. And then like I said again with this item, if any more stuff does come up with those questions, you do have over the next couple of days to ask us before. To go back and forth with us before we get back to the item next week.
You know, the reason you guys say right now is so easy. But when we called, nobody answered. Excuse me, nobody answered, even the, what is that, the guy inspect? Did it true or not? I heard the castle. I'm not dealing, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I just heard. Did he have a license? Did he have qualified to inspect? Just all question I have, the reason I came here, his signature threatening me on the table. I have to go down the hall outfit, lifting my granddaughter and ballet character. And drive all the way Mount Sasa to get that letter and threatening letter and. I want to know when the city counseling hires somebody support to attempt. To qualify or not, they're supposed to do the job or not. But that, that what I heard, that was the reason I came here. I've been here twenty-five years, did the third time I came to the city council. I only come when the important, but it did, it just, I'm not complaining, but did it wrong. When you hire somebody or tech daughter, you know, be swept and fought working to pay. And we should know who this person qualify or not. That's what I want to add, you know, he could pay like anybody else, you know? He, that, that he, that's what I heard, he didn't have a license for it. He not qualified for it, but why, I want to know who hired him. Thank you, that's all I want to.
And Ted Rivera, forty-three ten Dunsmere, city council, city manager, mayor, supervisor Valenzuela. Um, I'm glad to hear that we're discussing the, the rules and, and the ordinances, because I think that's important. Um, I've always been willing to do what's right. I, as a, as a resident and a citizen. I have no obligation to explain what I'm doing if I'm within the law. I have a privacy and an expectation to perform my duties as an owner builder according to the law. And when I met Dennis and he said, hey, you need, you, you need a backflow valve, you know, did you know about that? I said, no way. Three days later, we were getting our permit signed, well, maybe, maybe a week, getting our permit signed off. Because this is what we do, a one inch. I did this as an owner builder. I don't need a, a contractor to charge me exorbitant amount of money. To do a simple job that I have the competency to do. Um. When we wanted to finally approach the city after fighting several battles to win our property. We wanted to continue repairs, so we said, hey, here's, here's what we want it to look like. We were denied a permit. To, to, to make simple repairs that were legally uh, uh, obligated to do under the law. Window replacement, drywall replacement, siding, all water damage. I got pictures of everything, it's tore up from the floor up. So when, when the transfer, I, I gave you permits showing you that when Dave was here. He understood what I was trying to do and he gave me a roofing permit. I put the roof on myself and I passed inspection. He gave me a permit to install a two hundred amp service to my building. I installed that service, I passed inspection. The new inspector, for whatever reason. I will say, maybe he doesn't have experience is probably the way I should put it. But when you come out of resident puffing and puffing, I'm going to shut you down. This is, you got thirty days or I'm going to pull this power. I was given this permit for this power. Did not understand what was happening, okay? Didn't understand where this aggression, this personal vent, it was personal emotion that was e- eluding from this gentleman, okay? I didn't get it. I'm used to professionalism. I understand resources may be such that we don't have a building and planning. Staffs working together to facilitate our, our desires as owner builders, but I'm willing to wait and learn, so. Rather than panic, force mature, thirty seconds? I want the city manager, I'm glad you talked about the rules in the law, because uh, what I'm saying is A B twenty-two thirty-four. Says that there, I have thirty days to receive a revision or a permit. And that's my resident. I'm basically this close to homelessness because. A B twenty-two thirty-four has been ignored for eight months on a thirty-day requirement by the city legally. To give me my permit or my requested revisions, thank you, and I'm glad that you heard me and I hope that we can get it done, because it. It should get.
Right? Anyone else?
Mister Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kurt Reical, P O Box one-one-one-six Mount Shasta. I really didn't intend to speak here tonight, I was just going to support my client. But after I heard the city manager's comments, I felt compelled to speak. Some of you know me personally and professionally, you know my outreach in the development community. Um, and I'm here to tell you, you got a problem in the community. The, the words, the, the, the feeling is very, very negative. Um, and I support my contention by this, most people aren't going to come here and comment because they're going to fear retaliation. And I support that simply by our experience that we've had with the current building official. When, uh. Ted received his building permit for the temporary tower, pardon me, I've got a little list, but, um. He, he had permanent tower in one of the residents, he had temporary tower in the other. Then he was threatened to have the temporary tower pulled and threatened with evatement. We had to fight that whole thing. In the course of this, we were trying to get a building permit. My engineer had a family member that became life-threatening ill for months. He was away. That delayed us. He no sooner comes back, I ended up with brain surgery. That delayed us. In communicating with the building department, it was very. They were listening but agitated. And when we got to the point where we finally submitted in August fourteenth. For the permit, in November, my client goes to the city and says, what's going on? And he's told, I'll tell you when you have some, when I have something. This kind of an attitude is just unacceptable for people of us, those of us that are trying to get something done. I, I heard the comment about upholding the law and I was going to make the same comment that Ted just made about A B twenty-two thirty-four. And what's happening is there's such a disregard for the community that it's putting you guys in legal jeopardy. Literally, the law's not being followed and you guys are going to be the ones that are going to suffer the consequences of it. I hear all this budget talk, all this monetary issues and, and we're not paying attention. I've tried to get a hold of the city, I can't. I leave messages, I leave messages, I don't get calls back. If you're going to continue this contract, you need to specify in there that the building official has an email account that people can reach him specifically. Not through somebody else and one that everybody can reach out to and get a response, so we can have an electronic file of all of our communication. Without having been said, thank you very much and I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Or two weeks, whenever.
Mario, to anyone else?
Yes. Hi, my name is David Edmondson, I live on Butterfly Avenue. Um, I moved to Dunsmere in two thousand and five. And started a business here in two thousand and thirteen. I have a great tremendous support from the community and from the city. And it's really been a, a quite a ride, though one of the most difficult things I've ever done. Lately, in past month or so, it seems that I've gotten in the middle of a battle between the city and my landlord. And it's made it extremely uncomfortable to, to, uh, to continue. Uh, I really want nothing more to, than to, to be successful here in Dunsmere, to one day be an employer. It brings up the fact that it just seems like there's a rather anti-business climate up late. And if you look up and down the street, I know you all have, there's a tremendous amount of vacant buildings. We really desperately need businesses here. We've got uh, uh, Bobby here, my landlord. Who's, who's making efforts to, to start businesses, put businesses in. He's uh, worked with me and, and we haven't. Always necessarily seeing eye to eye on, on things, but uh, we have a pretty solid working relationship at this point. I really would like to see business, Dunsmere become a more business friendly community. We could start with, with putting a moratorium on the historic district regulations. Those are punitive, if anything. Uh, you know, until we've got, say ninety percent occupancy rate in the, in the buildings in the historic district. This, why are we doing things that impede business? Anyway, that's my piece. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comment this evening on this item?
Uh, Bobby Mulenga, five eight three seven to five eight five five Dunsmer Ave. Um, so shortly after I bought my buildings, maybe two years ago. I get my first notice from the city of Dunsmere, says failure to maintain historic structures. I don't have a historic structure. I'm in the historic district. I don't have any historic buildings. So I call Mark Allen and I ask, you know, what's this about? He tells me that people like me are moving into Dunsmere and ruining the town. So he said it's his personal mission to get a search warrant, search every building that I own and write me up for every code violation he finds on the inside. Since that day, I've received violations from everything under the sun. None of them, the city can take me to court for because none of them are valid. They're all signed by James McIntyre, who, it's not a rumor, he is not certified to inspect any form of a commercial building. Um, my last conversation with James, he calls me, he says, hey, I'm never approving your building permits. I said, okay, why? He said, I don't feel like doing it. I said, can we meet? He said, no, I'm, I'm not in Dunsmere. I can't meet with you. I said, okay, well, when can we meet? I know that me and him have kind of a personal history. I said, I need to get these renters in. Can we please meet? He said, look, I just told you, I'm not in Dunsmere. I'm not by my calendar. I can't meet with you. I don't know when I can meet with you. And I said, well, we need to figure out something soon. He goes, how about this? He goes, how about I just hang up on you? He goes, you can call me back. You can leave a message. I may or may not feel like listening to that message in the next two weeks. He hangs up on me. I obviously get mad. I stormed down to the city hall and who's standing there? Building inspector, James. He was there the whole time. He's just standing at the desk laughing. This is the kind of person we're dealing with. You know, so I'm getting fined every month for failure to maintain my buildings, even though you guys see me out there every day painting them. Every day I'm fixing the trim. Every day I'm building the inside and putting, putting businesses on them, but I still get fined every day. And then I get told by the building inspector that he's not gonna give me permits to fix anything on my fines that requires a permit. And then you guys spend, what was the last check? Five thousand twenty five dollars in the last two weeks to your city attorney trying to come after me? Five thousand dollars that I could have spent on paint? I mean, that just doesn't make any sense. You guys are spending all this money just to feed two people's personal agenda in the city. They're not actually doing their job and they're not qualified to do their job. And our city manager's known about this for weeks and nothing's being done. And he knows nothing's being done. So he just tries to drag me through the mud so that he doesn't look bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Jake Grass, um, fifty eight thirty six Dunsmere Avenue. Um, I, I had the same, like, you know, being there at the hardware store every day for the last year plus, um. Unfortunately, I get to hear every rumor, every little thing, every little negative thing about everybody and every, every, everything. Whether it's true or not, who knows in this town, I don't know. But uh, the two things, the three things that actually came up a lot were uh, James McIntyre, uh, Mark Allen. And Dustin. And there's been a lot of negativity about that and those issues that, that were, were the same things that these people are saying. Issues with the inspector not showing up, Mark Allen harassing everybody. And then Dustin just basically sits back and doesn't do anything about it, or he tells you to your face, he's going to help you. And then he makes an announcement here about uh. People asking for special privileges. We're not asking for anything. We're asking for help. We're here to, we need help. So I, I went in and threw my hat in the ring to help Bobby. Because I wanted to find out immediately who's really doing the things downtown to ruin downtown and ruin this town. And that man is James McIntyre. And that other man is Mark Allen. We need your guys' help to get this taken care of. Now, we cannot wait. Another week after next week or another week or another week. It needs to happen now. You are killing this town by keeping this guy employed, Mark Allen employed. And James McIntyre employed. Do your job. Help us. Help this town. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name's uh, Tim Cavelo. I'm at uh. It's a new address. None of you probably know my name cuz I haven't put a single piece of paper. Video shop, yeah. And the reason I haven't put any paper in is because I wanted to understand what this town was all about first. Before I decided to stay here and invest my money, my time, even the seventy dollar business license. And what I found is there's some great people in this town. And there's some wonderful disasters going on here too. There's a misaligned enforcement. Bobby has five notices for the same thing that's going on right here at my building that nobody even pays attention to cuz there's no personal agenda against me. Because they don't know my name yet. And I think that's very unfair. So now that I'm known, I'm probably gonna get a notice. And I'd just like to say that that shouldn't be how a town is run. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Bruce Shoemaker, six zero zero six Butterfly. I just wanted to briefly relate my experiences with a residential building permit, two permits actually over the last year and a half. Uh, and I have serious concerns about professionalism, communications and flexibility. Uh, in terms of the building inspector, I'm not talking about the code enforcement or anybody else in the city. But I've uh, I feel like I've wasted days and days of time. Weeks of time and large amounts of money, uh, waiting for inspections. That I call for and aren't made. I've three times called on a Wednesday to have an inspection on a Thursday. Uh, and I never get the courtesy of a call telling me that the inspector can't come that day. I feel like it's the nineteen nineties as far as communications. I have to send a, make a voicemail to a landline. There's no opportunity to text and there's no common courtesy to let you know. I've had electricians standing by, my three person team, I'm working as an owner builder. With, with other people, I've, I've had contractors working, uh, a series of contractors. And the number of days we've just wasted, one, one day was right before our holiday. He didn't come on the Thursday. I had the, the uh. In insulation people from Reading were coming the next day. I had to cancel it. Again, and I don't, I can't even tell them to the last minute because the inspector never called me or texted me or emailed me to tell me he wasn't coming. I, I feel like we're considered the last, you know, Waireka is the priority, then it was Mount Shasta. And if he had time, he would come to Dunsmere. Uh, it was just absurd. Uh, and then the other issue is just flexibility. When my, when my roof first collapsed because of an oak tree. I was fighting time in the fall before it rained to try to get things covered up. I had a temporary building permit for. Uh, demo work and asbestos remediation. And I had to get. I, I had to get a temporary roof on and there was no, and it was gonna storm the next week. And there was no flexibility, even though I had, I had, I had a building permit, but it apparently there was some minor thing where it wasn't. Uh, believed to cover the part of the roof rebuild and I got a stop work order. I had a huge rainstorm and I had thousands of dollars worth of damage to my drywall on the part of the house. So I had thought was still gonna be usable. Um, I've wasted thousands of dollars and a lot more of my time than I should have had to. So we need better, I'm not saying fire someone or do something, but insist on professionalism and good communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any additional public comment on this item?
There's a hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, well, we've got someone in person and then we'll, yep.
Um, hi, my name's Selena Choate and uh, five eight five five Dunsmere Avenue. Um, so I'm trying to grab my, wrap my mind around all of this because it seems like every single person. Is talking about the same thing that I'm going through and uh, don't wanna be emotional about it, but my whole life is affected. Um. These guys have worked their asses off, worked their butts off to try to make something happen. And I went on a whim. Being twenty years in the, in the industry of the spa world, I had to lose my two jobs because I became. Direct competition with the two companies that I worked for who are supporting me and love me. So I went and took a big leap of faith and took on this dilapidated building that was disgusting and rotten, has been restaurants, right? Seems to have no problem with the restaurant opening, but after we work our butts off and make a lot of big decisions and. Work really hard with the city with permits, trying to get an inspection. So I'm still red tagged by the way, and I think this has been like four weeks. Um, I've had meetings, we've talked. I so appreciate you. I so, I so appreciate you guys. I'm not saying anything other than. This is becoming such a huge problem. My landlord, who totally took a big leap of faith and bought a building down here who. You know what? She wants to see my rent money next month and I'd like to be able to pay her, but right now I'm at a complete freaking halt. With being able to do anything. Fortunately, I have great clients. We're willing to go into a construction zone and let me do. You know, what I can do, but until I actually have an inspection, until all this gets resolved. You have, I have four practitioners who are moving in, who are ready to go in and I said, red tag on the door. They don't wanna lose their comfort zone to come in, but yet that's five, that's five jobs, potentially six jobs right here in this community. That now they're gonna go to Mount Shasta, they're gonna continue to stay to weed. They actually live here. They would like to work here. Their kids go to school here. You know, we've got families here that don't have options.
One second here. Once again, the autistics are really bad in this room. If you do have conversation, if you can take it out into the hallway.
So the frustration is, is I hear so many people saying the same thing and I am like such a peace, peacemaker. And I just wanna see this resolved so peacefully because I would love to be able to continue to have a business here, a career here. I'm at the age where I just like, it's building and it's go time. This is like, this is my big step. And this is what I wanted to do with my, the rest of my working years and right here, you know? And it hasn't come easy. Oh my gosh, it hasn't come easy. So I just would love for you guys to please fix the situation. Not just for like the people that are super, you know, willing to stay here. They've been here for forty years and they're still complaining about the same situation. It's just sad. Like, can we just move forward from this, please?
Thank you. Alright, is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment this evening?
I got Ahmad Tassi. Can I give it to Dave or you to read?
You can give it to us and then we'll take a look at it or just Mario, email it to us and we'll do it next at the main meeting. Um, we'll do it.
Well, yes, if I could get it done, but. Well, they don't want me to tell you so. Dave, you wanna read it?
Who's it from?
I got Ahmad Tassi saying he could, could make the meeting, so he sent it to me.
Give it, have it, have it printed out, have it printed out and we'll read it during the next one, at the main one. The Brown Act doesn't allow people to make multiple comments at the same meeting with the same item. So once we get to the next meeting, it'll be. Another opportunity to do comments. So, and we'll go from there. And if you wanna stick around till after the meeting, I'm more than happy to sit down for a few minutes and talk to you. I understand. Same thing, I understand. I'll give you, I'll give you a call. Right, any other public comment this evening? Any other public comment this evening? Right, Mark, uh, if you wanna unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. I, again, I guess I want to just echo what everybody else is saying. And I represent, I recognize what is represented in the room tonight is only a small portion. Many others are saying the same thing. And again, it's a beautiful town. We all love it. We all have to work together. It's the only way that we can, I'm sorry, I know, recognize I'm saying the same thing again, but um. But, but I'm really moved by what I'm seeing tonight and I, I thank all of you for having the courage to come out and. And no one's saying anything bad. They're just saying, let's help us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment this evening? Come on up to the, ask it and then that way we can have it in the record and go from there.
Sorry about that. Alan McGonya, uh, fifty nine sixty nine Dunsmere Avenue. Um, when is the next meeting? For the special agenda for this, if I may ask?
Done with the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, um, we're still working that out. It'll be there Tuesday, Thursday of next week, depending on some logistics. It'll go through the usual process of getting the agenda posted online and then just. Alright, anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item for this evening. Once again, due to the Brown Act issue, we won't have any council discussion. And we will re-table this item until the special meeting next week. And with that, we will move on to item number D, which is under the, or item, letter D, which is under the uh, same issue. Um, so with that, we will move into public comment for item number D, same rules as uh, everything before. If you'd like to make any comment. Lead us off.
Uh, Mister Mayor, council members and staff, my name is Peter Arth. I live at fifty eight fifty nine Sacramento Avenue. Uh, with regard to this item, I wanna thank the leadership of the council and the city manager for finally moving it to. An active agenda item. And I realize the hour is late, so I will be very brief. What I hope happens is in the next thirty days. Uh, former Mayor Matthew Bryan will agree to convene a meeting. On different ways to improve the governance of the historic district. And invited to this meeting will be Ron McLeod, the town historian. The two historic district delegates, which will include the chair, Craig Kay. The city manager, uh, at least one of the consultants from the Cosmont Company. Uh, if you wanna invite Mark Juarez, if you wanna invite Peter Arth, that's totally up to you. But the idea is to begin to improve the issue of communication. And to recognize that the city staff is small and overloaded, that your plates are entirely full. Uh, and to try to find a way to move forward as part of the downtown revitalization strategy. Uh, to include the business community. Uh, and to take some of the energy you've heard in the last hour. Uh, and look for ways that we could work together. Uh, there are two obvious options. One is the Ron McLeod, five member historic district oversight committee. That he thought worked extremely well. The other is to actually develop a business improvement district. Probably co-terminus with the historic district boundaries with the notion that district will have the legal ability. To tax and more importantly, to attract grants. Um, I would hope after the meeting that we could bring back to the planning commission. And the city council recommendations. Recommendations so that we could actually. Develop a consensus. This will be a process that won't happen overnight, but I think it needs to start. With the notion, I think you've already committed yourselves in July. To look at the Cosmont five strategies and begin the process of priorities. Planning, funding and execution. Thank you.
Thank you.
I carried this study around for a long time. It's nineteen sixty-nine feasibility study. Oddly enough, the statistics in this are much better than ones we got at Cosmont. I agree with Peter. It needs to be a district. The reason this one went, didn't go through and me and Peter, when we got on council, went through about five or six of them studies. And none of them worked. It's the same thing. There isn't a buy-in. A district would be a buy-in for the people that are in it. And they're going to take the ability to be able to have control over it instead of being, at this point, feeling attacked. I I just really think when everything's done and said, I hope council goes for the fact. That a district will be the solution to getting that historic commercial viable again. I need to give you these.
All right, thank you. And then any other in-person comments? All right, and then I see we.
My name is Alan McGonaghy, four one one six Pine Street. I'm hoping to have a business in the historic district and want to be part of what Peter Arth was mentioning in regards to. The historic district or the business improvement district in regards with that, with Ron McLeod's blessing. If I can be part of that committee, if it was to be going into that motion and if it was going more with the Cosmont, I would like to be part of that, if I may. In some form or fashion, as an avid lover of Siskiyou County and history, I would love to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right, Mark Juarez, I see your hand is raised. Do you have a comment on this item?
I do. And Peter, thank you for inviting me. And I'd like to also encourage other property owners within the historical district. As well as should be invited. We all have a stake. We bought buildings in the historical district because we love history and we want to preserve it. And we're the ones that really, we we should be a part of this. So as Ellen had asked to be a part of it, thank you. I'd like to be a part of it. And I think there's others who would like to be.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. Once again, because of the Brown Act non-compliance. We will not be doing any council discussion and this will be tabled until the special meeting. So with that, we'll move on to item number twelve, future agenda items. I know we have kind of a pretty packed next meeting and I don't really want to add anything other than these other two items to the special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose that we do the Cosmont Plan, but a revitalization summit. And perhaps it'd be opportune to have the historic district forum prior to that, so they could be a component in the presentation for that. It doesn't have to be right away, but I would hope for late June, mid-July. Give ourselves enough time and a secured venue that everyone has the opportunity to attend who may be interested.
I'd like to get something going on that. I agree, we should be doing that fairly soon. I'd like to get something going relatively soon because I know that. The grant money was good for roughly three years and I think every, every month we can have them working for us to try to implement what we want. Is going to be better. So I feel like the sooner we have that meeting and we get them knowing what exactly we want. The sooner we can hopefully get some results out of them.
My one concern with rushing this is, one, they have to come up, it's sometimes from great distances. And two, I really want to make sure the time, the place, the manner and agenda of the meeting is determined. Weeks, if not a month in advance. So anyone who can't attend in person has the opportunity to attend perhaps through Zoom. And sufficient notice is given. I mean, we we adequately notice according to the law for these public meetings. And certainly people have the opportunity to attend to be part of it. I'm trying to build something here that has a broader consensus than our council meetings. Behind the revitalization plan. So it's vital that whatever we decide to do. Be totally determined and invitations essentially sent out, whether personally or posted, at least three weeks in advance.
I I wasn't suggesting necessarily rushing. I was just saying I don't feel like we should delay it into August or even that.
Right, I do have something.
We have the Wi-Fi hotspots that are available right now, but we haven't lined up the landing page. And so I'm actually meeting with Heather from Discover Siskiyou and Jason Young from the Economic Development Council tomorrow. Along with a company called Caspio to look into working on a. A system that will allow the entire county to have all this information and I'm hoping that they might be able to. Develop our landing page and working all the key words for everything else that I'm working on. So I'd like to have it. Obviously at the next meeting, following one, discuss that and we're going to have a few.
I think it would be a lovely idea if they could perhaps buy advertising on it. Yeah, yeah.
Councilor, are you asking June twentieth?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then June, we'll talk more about this. I would like to see the fireworks ordinance in June. Just because I feel like if we wait till July for the private service, I feel like there's that going to be. It's not going to do it again. No, it's, it actually is on my desk right now, so.
I'm concerned. Some of the things I heard tonight, I I truly believe that we should expedite the city manager's evaluations. Let's see where we're at and where we can maybe approve. I requested, I get the council member's second is, I think it's important, I think it's important for our people.
With all due respect, Councilman Kessler, I do think it's important we evaluate and take our community's input very seriously. I would say I'd appreciate you taking careful notes. August is very soon. I'm looking forward to having a good review with you then, but I don't support moving it up. We have really pressing matters with emergency meetings coming up.
You want to have another, anybody else? I don't need him. I need another one. There's some concerns here.
We can chat about, we'll chat about this after the special meeting.
Y'all see the trial.
All right, with that, if there's not anything else, I will. Entertaining. Meeting adjourned.